Yeah, well, once they start talking, all the hot air.
It's that hot air down.
Yeah, I said, just talk real softly, or maybe turn around and talk. Uh, we need a motion to open.
I'm making a motion to open.
Second? In all of the favor? Seven thirty-one, we're opening, okay. And that's Dan, okay, thank you. All right, uh, well, I'd like to welcome everyone to the August thirteenth.
Third.
Oh, yeah, third. I got third.
Don't push the summer.
I know, wait a minute. Well, yeah, I'm thinking of my classroom, sorry. Uh, third, uh, two thousand sixteen zoning board of appeals. My name's Tom Wakefield. On my left is Kathy Franson, Casey Bailey, Mark McCabe, Dan McDonald, and the clerk is Julie House. Uh, we're gonna go on gender items. And the first item tonight is application two sixteen dash four made by Michael Wood, owner of premises located at eight School Street, Groveland, Platte, ten lot zero four four, for a special permit for an accessory in-law apartment according to all applicable sections of the Town of Groveland zoning bylaws, including section three oh one point eight. And there was a vote anticipated, so talk softly. Oh, you know what? Hold on. Yeah, 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 yeah. He'll give you a mic.
Nobody, I don't wanna hear myself. All right, Mike Wood, eight School Street. Um, so I wanna put an in-law addition on to my house. I don't know if you have the plans there or the plot lines, but I have copies of those for you too. I don't think it's much, really. I think it beats all the requirements by the town.
Is, um, uh, is the addition, Mike, uh, the green?
Yeah, it didn't print very well, but yeah, it's the green in the back.
Yeah, yeah, okay, good. Uh, oh, it's on the other side, too.
Well, one side you could see the print and one side you couldn't, so I printed it twice. I used to sit on this board, remember, so I know you had to.
But, but you could've used a different piece of paper, because I'm getting, you know, I'm getting it both ways. All right.
Questions, comments?
Well, yeah, we do.
Okay.
Kathy Franson is our math genius.
I remember her math skills.
Yeah, and, uh, uh, the ordinance requires the, the structure to be nine hundred. Yeah, yeah, less than nine hundred or nine hundred less, but it appears that, how, what'd you come up with, Kathy?
Well, this is what, uh, this is what I'm trying to figure out. I came up with a thousand eight.
No, no, it's way too big.
Okay.
Yeah, we know.
Maybe, maybe they're just so small and like.
So it should be, um, thirty-four, the total length, by twenty-four deep, the total length, and there's the notch out of that.
What did you come up with square footage, Mike?
See, 'cause I got forty-four here across the top.
I'm sorry, forty-four, you're right, I'm sorry.
Okay, so forty-four times twenty-four, right?
Is it nine-ten?
Is a thousand fifty-six. So then I thought, okay, well, now I have the.
Then you got the minus sixty or whatever that is.
Right, so that's nine sixty.
I thought it was supposed to be nine-ten.
Nine hundred.
But then it doesn't, now, this little.
That's a deck.
Where the stairwell is, right? Like, that's the, that's an actual deck?
That's a deck, yeah.
Okay, all right. I wasn't sure if I should include that.
Nope. And I think the, um, the design was, the actual living space was nine hundred or something, but it's handicap accessible. So we had to widen it a little bit to make sure that we could fit the handicap doors and hallways in.
What is this, uh?
But there was, I think, I was looking at this too, and the, the calculation says nine hundred.
Yeah, the nine hundred is pretty, uh, uh, the only.
Upper hall area shall exclude unfinished basements, workshops, unfinished attic, closets, and garages.
Wasn't it, uh, nine hundred or the percentage, whatever was greater?
Yeah, there, there is. It's twenty-five percent of the habitable area of the dwelling which is located. Now, if you had a huge house.
The house is pretty big.
And you, and you took your.
The assessors.
You got it, you got it.
And it, I remember looking, uh, thirty-one fifty-four is what the assessors have as their finished square footage.
That's existing house, and what's twenty-five percent of that?
How much is it?
Seventy-eight point five. See, so that would have to be probably around five thousand square feet to, to exceed the nine hundred. And you're at thirty-one fifty-four. So, uh, and I'm just, what is this, Mike, at the back of? You got a kitchen and you got a living dining. Is, is, is the living dining, right behind what appears to be, is that a closet?
I don't know what you're looking at.
Six, right here, six, six foot, uh.
I can't see that from here.
Six, six foot four by three foot four. What is this here?
Uh, that's a washer dryer, yeah.
Oh, 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 okay.
And then, uh, these are closets.
Uh, so this is existing.
Yep.
Uh, yes, those are closets, yeah. Kitchen, walk-in.
This is the closet, that's the closet.
Yes. So this is all, this is washer dryer pantry, right, right.
You may be under nine hundred.
Yeah, there's a lot of closet space and a lot of pantry space.
It says the, yeah, it says that, uh, shall exclude unfinished basements, workshops, unfinished attic closets. Okay, so what do we got for closets here?
I'm working on it.
The mathematician's working on it. She'll get it.
So you can back out the closet space?
So, uh, and who's gonna live here?
Just two.
And, and they, uh?
My in-laws.
Your in-laws, okay.
My in-laws. They're already moved in with me.
Where, where do they, where do you live now?
With me now. They sold their house and moved in, uh, last month.
Oh, you live in Groveland?
Yeah.
Well, sometimes we deny this because the people really don't want you there, and so we, we just sort of.
Help us out.
Help you out.
A backdoor help out.
Yeah, we've done that a couple of times, yeah. That's why I wanna make sure they really want you there, you guys. What you got?
I'm still working, I'm still counting my fingers and toes over here.
So what was the total square feet with the, with the closets?
With the closets, it was nine sixty.
Nine sixty.
Oh, nine sixty, yeah, sixty, so we get it. So we're gonna get sixty square feet out.
Really?
Yeah.
But I think if you remove the closets, I think it gets under that. I think that's what the builder, the designer did.
Yeah, I know, I mean, he's coming in here for.
I know, but that's, that's the ordinance. We, we don't, we don't, we don't make it, that's, that's what it says.
How many closets are here?
She's working on it right now. Um, there's one, two, three, four, five.
There's probably sixty.
Maybe six, yeah.
There's two double closets, double doored closets. While we're waiting for her to do that calculation, is there anyone here that, that's in favor of this, that's speaking in favor?
Yes.
There's sixty feet right here.
Yeah, at least.
And yet, we, we need to come up and, and, and tell us your name and, 'cause.
Mike?
Mike?
Can I ask a question?
Isn't there sixty feet right here?
Yeah, these, you got two double doored closets right in the bedroom.
Oh, there probably is, yeah.
Yeah.
How, how deep are those?
Uh, probably two feet, at least.
Hold on, she's doing it right now.
I got it right now. So we have a hundred and six point two four square feet of closet space. So if you take the nine sixty.
So it's eight sixty?
It's good to go, good to go. What do we got? What, so it's nine sixty minus one oh six?
Eight hundred and fifty-three square feet.
I like that.
Seven six square feet, if you wanna be realistic.
I did my homework, Tom, I.
Why'd you make a struggle?
I wanted to see if your math skills, it's hold true since I was on the board, that's all.
So.
And I saw you using your iPhone, though, you gotta do that in your head.
So, uh, you're in favor, and I'm, I'm assuming you're the, the mother-in-law?
Yes.
And your name is?
Mary Carol.
Okay, Mary Cal. We need it for the record, that's all.
What's the last name, I'm sorry?
Elmo, B E L L, B.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's Carol. Mary, okay.
And Donald.
And is there anyone else that's in favor? Anyone opposed? All right, uh, we need a motion at seven forty to close it, the hearing.
I'll make a motion to close it.
You need a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second all?
Favor?
Okay, any discussion? Do you get any discussion in this one?
I think it's pretty, uh, you know, if you meet the guidelines.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
You get it, right?
Well, yeah, now that we got it to eight, eight fifty, he made us work for it, but, uh.
You gotta earn your paycheck here.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. He made you work for it, that's right. Well, how about, uh, anyway, how about, how about a motion? Can you get a motion here?
I'm just curious, well, we're gonna, um, instead of these people having to pay this kinda money to commit anything, I thought the building inspector was gonna start doing something with the in-laws.
Oh, this is nothing. The, the fee to, to actually get the permit's gonna be like nine hundred dollars.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, just to save. Remember we have?
No, not that it.
The fee for the ZBA is like three hundred.
We cut, we cut that down.
Yeah, I know, you cut it down, too. I was part of that, that cut it down.
The bylaws, so you, you have permits by right.
Right, right.
Yeah, I think that that was just passed in the senate, or on the house, or something like that. I think that's what Sam told me, that that's coming down, but I can't wait for that.
For you, it's double, 'cause you're a BOS.
That was SOB.
As if you're dyslexic. So how about a motion? You get a motion?
I'll make a motion, I'll throw the, right?
Motion, seconded.
I'll second the motion.
And now, get any discussion? No discussion? Vote? Okay, now, I need Julie to tell you how it works.
Oh, I know.
Julie will give you the spiel.
Um, I have fourteen days to write up your decision, and after fourteen days, um, it, it will be at, uh, the town clerk's office. I will send you a letter.
Mm-hmm.
And this twenty-day appeal period, and after the twenty-day appeal period, if no one, um, comes and says they're against it, then you can come pick up your decision, you bring it down to the registry deeds, have them stamp it, and then you bring that original back to the town clerk, files.
Okay. And then I go get my permit for eight hundred and nine hundred dollars.
And if you have any questions, you can call me.
Yep. Is that it?
Thank you.
That's it.
That's it.
That was easy.
That is easy. So you start off with the easy one.
You could've made it easier for us, but you want us to work. That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
That was a good joke you made.
Okay, yeah. All right, thank you. All right, uh, we are adjourning now, is that it? Uh, oh, wait a minute, hold on. I guess we're not adjourning, huh? All right, we got a lot of people here for this next one. Boy, what do you think? You think we can handle it? The second one, you all set, Julie?
Yep.
Okay. The second one is application two sixteen point five, made by Michael Elise of six Mulberry Street, and Kevin Hunneff of two eleven Seventh Star Road, to appeal the building inspector's decision of issuance of a billing permit, and for a finding of fact for seven eighty-five Salem Street. That's Platte forty-seven, lot zero four eight, according to all applicable sections of Town of Groveland zoning bylaws, see section three oh five point two. There is a vote anticipated. So who do we have is gonna come up and do the?
Hi, I'm Kevin Hunneff.
Can you wait till I turn to, uh, the other seat's got the, the wired for the electric, so.
The trap door?
It's got the shock on it, but, go ahead. We all have, uh, plans, so, which are probably, is the same one?
Yep. I think you have the proposed, I have a copy of the existing as well.
We've got those two.
Oh, all right.
I think it's on there.
The small one. No, the small, the, the small one is the existing, the big one is the proposed.
So what are you gonna do over there?
Well, what the issue is, is we have a house that's, uh, built back in the fifties. It's been a single-family residence, I believe it's been since it was built, and I believe that it pre-exist zoning. The existing house sits on the property line, on the right-hand side, as you can see.
Yep.
This shows, this shows, this is Salem Street, this is the house.
Yep.
The house is on the property line on the right-hand side of it, right-hand side of the lot. So we're proposing to tear it down and, uh, build a fifteen hundred square foot, single-family home, um, that will meet setbacks.
What color is the house you're gonna build?
Do you have any preference?
No, I just wondered, just checking, see how, how, how far along this is. You gonna put windows in it, I, I, yeah, okay, good.
Is the proposed house in any way non-conforming to the zoning?
Well, it would be non-conforming because of frontage and because of lot size.
Frontage and lot size.
But, uh, it, it would meet setbacks.
Okay.
And I believe I'm allowed a ten-foot setback because of the lack of frontage.
Yeah, there's a, there's a section.
Real platform, please.
Yeah, there's a section here that's, uh, and I'm gonna read that when we get to, uh, deliberating, uh, but. Pretty straightforward, I, and then the house that's there is in pretty rough shape, and, uh.
I think it may have originally been a trailer, that was.
Yeah, and there was added.
I thought that too.
I thought so too, it added on, added on to, yeah, uh.
How big is the house that's there now?
The house we're building is about fifteen hundred square feet. You have a copy of it in this?
I do, the.
It looks like it's, what kind is it, a ranch or a square foot?
Yeah, it's gonna be a small colonial.
Oh, small colonial.
Just a box colonial, yeah, nothing fancy.
So it'll be two-story?
It'll be two stories.
Is that an increase in square footage over what's existing?
Uh, I'm not sure, to be honest with you. I don't, if it is, it isn't by much. It actually, the, the lot coverage gets less, but the house may be bigger because of the second floor.
It's definitely a small colonial, thirty by twenty-four.
Smaller footprint.
Yeah, smaller footprint.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm not sure about the square footage, I'll have.
Is there a garage with that?
How that compares, no, no garage with it.
You doing some figuring, Kathy, over there?
Uh, yeah, I, I actually.
She's doing the math.
No, 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 I, I actually was at the property early today, so I'm looking at some pictures and stuff, what I saw, that's all.
I parked right across the street and looked at it right there. What's any that road?
Pennio?
Yeah, Pennio, yeah.
Pino.
Pino, Pino, yeah.
It is, uh, the house is kinda ugly, the house is there, it's kinda like.
Well, you know, reminded me of my home when I grew up.
Okay, well, I'm.
Well, he's ugly.
I just wanna make you feel better. Look how red he got. I'm kidding, I'm just kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. But it got a good, yeah, look how red he is, my guy, this is good.
The only guy who's dropping beans got teeth.
Yeah, really.
I know his.
Yeah, I know, he borrowed him.
Both of them, huh? Does anyone have any questions of Kevin?
And it, and it, is this, is the zone, is it zone RB? Do you know the zone? Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
Now, what about the, the septic system? Now.
The septic system is existing, it's, uh, it's past Title V.
It has passed, yeah. And how many bedrooms is it designed for?
Three.
It is?
Yep.
The existing?
Yes.
Well, that passed, huh?
Yeah, how, how, how do you know that?
Cause it's currently two bedrooms.
Do we have records of that?
I, I read the Title V report, is how I came up with the answer, that's where we had them set up.
Okay. And do we have, do, just for my, do we have records that would tell you how many bedrooms?
Yes. Yes. It, it's a Title V report, and when that other septic system was built, it was built with three bedrooms.
Okay.
And we're not sure if there was modifications on the.
How many bedrooms, uh, is, is existing?
It's two, and there's another room that could possibly be a bedroom, but it was, somebody told me that seven kids were up in the house.
Yeah. I know, I, I, yeah, I know.
Who's house was that? Oh, that's right.
Yeah, I knew that, I knew that, back then. So, and, and, and this, is it, is it town, is it town water there?
Yeah, it's gonna look beautiful.
Town water?
Major improvement.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a big improvement all of what's there.
The Title V report with the bedrooms.
Yeah, we should probably have a, can we get a copy of that?
That's a copy of the Title V report, with as a free bedroom.
Can we get a copy of that for, for our records?
But, Tom, it seems like, I mean, it's non-conforming, but it's gonna be less non-conforming when he's done.
No, no, I, I.
He's diminishing, he's diminishing the, the, uh.
And also, you're gonna, you're gonna increase your, your tax base and, and no further impact on that.
It depends on the color of the house, though, I think.
It's not his only board issue, but we like that.
No, I know, I know. I'm just saying, it's a plus-plus, but.
A-actually, uh, I, I'm gonna tell you why, 'cause I, I've talked to the.
Yeah, why was it denied?
No, I, I'll tell you, but, but let's, let's go through the process and then, uh.
Can I just tell you, I did my little math figuring, sorry. The existing home is eight hundred and eighty-eight square feet.
Yeah, okay, good.
So it is an increase.
It's increased, yeah.
Yeah.
It's the building inspector's.
Almost doubled.
Yeah, cause it's gonna be two floors.
Anything else, Kevin?
No.
Okay, is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor of this proposal? Anyone opposed?
A lot opposed, what's in between, I just.
Go ahead. Uh, what, you, you, you need to come up and, and identify yourself for, uh, what happened?
She, yeah.
Take, take five for him. Don't breathe, though, 'cause we, we're going into hot air.
This is, that's what's there now.
Okay.
We're actually gonna move the driveway from this side over this side. It's gonna be a simple.
Do you have any proposed elevations or anything?
Um.
Just, oh.
I think it says one oh six.
Oh, you're right, I'm sorry, I did see that. Yeah, I did see that.
Let me just say that, while, while we got a little low, we're waiting for, uh, Julie to, to, I did talk to the building inspector.
But I did go.
And, uh, he, he didn't have any problem with this. Uh, hi- his issue was, he thought that it had to go to the board because it was a, uh, uh, grandfathered law. But, but I, I, the way I read it, uh, I, I, I didn't see that. But, but I, but, but I will say that, as a former inspector, sometimes if, if I thought that I didn't wanna make a decision, I, I would send it to the board, you know, knowing full well that, you know, it probably wasn't an issue, but just didn't wanna make that decision, but, yeah. Okay, here we go.
Turn around, talking to us about what it's gonna look like.
Thank you.
We don't really care what they think.
Yeah. Okay, now, your name again is?
Uh, Beth Rose, seven nine two Salem Street.
Beth Rose, seven nine two Salem Street.
I grew up across the street and still am there, from the Martins' old house, which, yeah, uh, which was a three-bedroom when I was growing up, with seven children in that house, but, um, so I was just curious as to what it was gonna look like and where it was located, and since we couldn't see from back there, I was not opposed or in agreement, I just, and he's shown me, um, and I do think it would probably be an improvement to the.
Depending on the color, yes. Alyssa, I, 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 I'm just teasing.
If it's purple or green, we may have a problem.
Yeah, you know, purple might be nice. I, I do have a question. I, I gotta, I gotta just share with you that the people on the, uh, left of the lot.
Yep.
Friends, friends called me and, and, uh, they were interested in, and there's a couple of trees that are on that property, and they were curious as to if they would be remaining after the house is up.
Yeah, I was, there's two small trees out in front I was gonna take down, but I'm not taking down anything.
I think it's two shade trees, they're pretty good-sized trees.
These, the trees I was taking down are small.
Like scrub?
Yeah, yeah, they're not.
Yeah, okay. Are you familiar with what I'm talking about? I guess there's two trees on there that.
It would be on that left side of the lot?
Yes, yeah.
I didn't intend to take anything down on the left side of the lot.
I just wanted to share.
Yeah, there's a couple of big, uh, they look like elm trees.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's what he said, it was elm trees, so.
Yeah, right here? The ones that are right here?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that the ones he was, the neighbor was discussing?
Yeah, they, they afford him, uh, shade.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so, and I said, I didn't know, I said, but I said I would ask for him.
I was gonna take down the two that are on the front lawn, is what I was gonna take down.
On the front of the house.
Yeah, those are like scrub.
Yeah.
Yeah.
See?
Okay, thank you. Any other ones, anyone else wanna speak in favor or opposed?
Any questions?
Any questions? Would you come on up and, and identify yourself, please?
My question is exact.
No, no, what's your name first?
My name is Ed Kuznicki.
You wanna spell that?
K U Z N I C K I.
Thank you. And where do you live?
Seven eighty-five R Salem Street.
Where?
Seven eighty-five R Salem Street.
Yeah, with the R.
It's in the back.
It's in the back, the.
Right, okay.
You can see, if you look at the plan, there's a driveway that goes down the right side.
I don't know if that was right side, uh, okay. So that's in back, okay? And what would you like?
I'd like to know exactly where the new structure, as to the property line, the exact property line is gonna end up being.
Here, here's where, right now, the house, let me, let me tell you this one for us. This one shows, this is where the house is right now. It's all the way over on this property line. That's your driveway right there, and it's a piece of equipment that's on the park right there.
Yep.
Okay. So here's where the new one is gonna be. The new one is gonna be twenty, twenty feet away from that property line.
And what, what are the, what is gonna be the parking for that?
The driveway is gonna go right here, right on the side of the house. It's two-car parking.
Will, will there be a fence there?
Well, there's a couple of fences there now. Um, I don't know who owns the fences, whatever.
The wood fence belongs to me.
Okay, then the wood fence will stay.
Okay. That wood fence belongs further, three inch, three inches over from where it is, to the left.
Over, okay.
It's supposed to be right up against the house.
Okay. I'd be glad to go, to meet you on site, and if the fence needs to get moved, or the fence needs to get adjusted, I'm more than happy to take care of it. If the fence is a piece of junk, I'll replace the fence.
This, uh, what, what, uh, this has been surveyed, surveyed by.
Yeah, I did a full survey.
Yeah, by, uh, William Holt. Have you, have you showed him that there?
Yeah, we, yeah, I showed him.
I mean, it's already surveyed and.
So I'm sure he's got pins out there. We can pull the pin, we can.
I know where the pins are. So you're saying your driveway is gonna meet with my driveway?
Um, no, I don't intend to have my driveway over that far. My driveway's gonna stay right, right there. I mean, they'll be side by side, but they'll be right there, and there'll be obviously a fence between them. I mean, you have, your driveway's like over here, and then there's that piece of equipment that's parked there, and then my driveway will be over here.
So the house will be further over to the left to?
Correct, that's right. Twenty feet. Moving away from your property line by twenty feet.
Okay. As far as trees, the trees in the back?
I'm not touching any trees.
Okay.
I have no interest in cutting trees.
Okay.
I will work with you on the fence.
Okay.
All right.
Any other questions?
Yeah, do you have anything else?
What was the, why was the original building inspector's, uh?
Why did he, why did he write the letter?
Yeah, why was he denied?
Because it was an undersized lot, and he didn't feel comfortable making the decision, and, uh, as I, as I stated, uh, as a former inspector, I can, I can understand that sometimes you just don't wanna make a decision, you have the board do it, and, uh, he has no problem with it, but, but the fact of the matter is, the, the ordinance does allow for pre-existing lots, and it, and it does allow it also with a lot less than a hundred fifty frontage to, um, ink, to, uh, allow it to have ten-foot setbacks on the side. So, uh, they're, they're actually bringing that particular lot into compliance with the current zoning regulations.
Okay.
I have the letter from the building inspector here, if you wanted to see it.
No, I don't, I, I'm just, just curious why.
We just said it wasn't.
Yeah, I don't know why.
We, 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 we never got, yeah, what's that?
The building inspector said it wasn't clear enough in the.
Well, that's what he said, I mean, I, I cleaned my glasses and it was pretty clear to me, but, but, yeah. So, Tom. But with my glasses a little foggy, it could be a little bit confusing.
Okay.
But I do understand, I've been in that position where, where I've said, hey, listen, yeah, I don't feel comfortable, and, and, and if he was opposed, he'd be here, you know, so, it's not, it's not, it's just a, just a regulatory type thing that, that sort of protects you too, so that if anyone else in the future, if you were to, to, uh, sell it, and, and, uh, someone did a title search by some attorney that was, uh, new or, or overzealous, would say, hey, wait a minute, I don't read it that way, so this way here, it's covered all bases.
Well, and I, I wonder too, if he wanted to make sure it went to a public hearing, where neighbors could come and express their concerns, and, so I'm sure that's why it's here.
Maybe, it could have been as well, yeah.
Another question, is this gonna, how, how many bedrooms is this gonna be?
Three bedrooms.
And you say the septic system is large enough?
Yeah, right here.
Title five. Title five is the number of bedrooms, three. That's what it's designed for, it's a three-bedroom. That was, I got that from the board of health.
Do you own this property already?
Yes.
You do. Did you do your own title five, or did the previous seller do the title five?
Previous seller did the title five.
Right. Okay.
Here's the title five.
Well, I have an issue with that.
I'm sorry?
I have an issue with that.
What's the matter?
The septic system that was put in with the previous owner, part of the leach field ended up on my property. Now, when that was done, I raised hell back then, because he didn't, the previous tenant informed me that he was gonna have its property surveyed, and he would let me know when they were doing the work. I came home from work one afternoon, and my yard is torn up, and they were installing the septic. And they informed me then that part of the leach field was gonna be on my property, because they had no other choice, because of the lot size.
According to the survey, the septic system is on the lot, and it meets setbacks.
Yeah, the, the, the survey I'm looking at, uh, and I, and I will say that, that in the past, I've been a licensed plumbing inspector for a different state, and, uh, this certainly meets all, all the criteria, it's probably a good thirty feet from your property line.
Wasn't this bank owned?
Yeah, FDIC is who I'm.
Yeah, FDIC wouldn't allow.
Then if you got, if you got an issue with that, you need to talk to William G. Holt, who is a land surveyor, license number three nine six eight eight, because he surveyed this, and this is what he's got right here, which is what Kevin has in front of him. So if you're, if you, if you don't believe that, then you need to talk to a surveyor and, and, uh, but isn't, it's not the jurisdiction of the board to say that that, this isn't correct. I've got a stamped copy right here, by William G. Holt, that says that's probably about fifty feet from the parking line.
That's not, no, that's not fifty feet.
Well.
Nowhere near fifty feet.
It certainly meets current setback.
Yeah, I mean, it, it appears that it's probably.
This is thirty-seven.
Yeah, well. Yeah.
The building line is fifteen feet.
Well, I'm talking up here, not here.
The building line, the dotted line is fifteen feet of property line.
Yeah, I'm talking up here. Right here.
Or ten, no, it would be ten.
But this is thirty-seven.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, well, it's, it's, it's a good thirty feet away, so it's not, it's not on your property line, it's just, unless you have a surveyor that says it is, and, and then you, then you'd have to take it up with the Board of Health, because that's a Board of Health issue, and not, not an issue for the Board of Appeals.
Okay.
Yeah. Do you have any other questions?
Nope.
Nope. Anyone else have any questions? Okay, uh, we need a, a vote to close the hearing at eight oh five.
Make a motion to close the hearing at eight oh five.
Mark, eight oh five, seconded? Casey seconded, all of us in favor? Okay, we'll close the hearing. How about, uh, any discussion?
I think Sam sent it to us for the, the finding that's required by section six of chapter forty-eight, since it's a little weird, because it's not, you know, typically that's for a non-conforming structure that is gonna continue to be non-conforming, but reconstructed. This one is actually coming into full compliance, the structure is, but the lot and the frontage will remain, uh, non-conforming. But the requirement is a finding that the proposed new structure is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what is existing, so I think that's the standard that we're looking for. And I would suggest that it's an improvement, um, and that it brings the structure into compliance, um, looks like there'll be some cleanup, and seems like a good project to me.
Any other comments?
Will you guys keep the noise down a little bit in here?
Seems to me it meets the requirements to bring it in conformity, Tom.
Yeah, I know, no, it's, it's a, it's a big improvement, as long as the color's right for the neighborhood.
I think that's irrelevant, but.
Yeah, I know, I think.
You have anything, Kathy? Casey, since you know what the finding is, why don't you tell me what you want, and, and you can make a motion, how's that?
Um, I make a motion that we approve the application, and that the board signs that the project that's proposed is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Need a seconded?
I'll second it.
Seconded. Any further discussion? All of us in favor? Five, zero, now, you need to go, we need to go through the drill, hold on, sit right there, because you haven't been here before, have you?
Before you, I would think.
Oh.
Couple times.
Oh, good, good. So this is the first time?
Yeah.
Did we put, you put the paces good?
Yeah. So far.
So far. Yeah, Julie will give you the information.
Um, the decision will be filed within fourteen days, and after fourteen days, there's a twenty-day deal clearing, and after twenty-day clearing, you are more welcome to go to the town clerk's office and pick up the original decision, bring it down to the registry, have a stamp, and bring it back to the board, um, to the town clerk's office. And I will be sending you a copy of the, uh, decision.
Okay, very good.
Looks like a good project.
Thank you, yeah, I think it is.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay.
There's the.
All right.
That needs to go farther than that.
That was painless. For us.
Oh, and you needed that other sheet for the other one, I was supposed to give you that.
So, let's see. The next item on the agenda is the, the data on application costs. What'd you do with those, Julie? You give it to me?
Yes.
Good to see you guys, thank you.
Yeah, Mike.
Okay, okay. What do I do with them?
Did you get them?
Yeah, I did.
What do I do with them?
What?
What do I do with them? Here they are.
Oh, I didn't get one of those.
Here they are.
Oh.
Julie, why don't you tell us what this says?
Okay, so, if you look at this, does everyone have one? Okay, so, um, what I did was I put in, where I written down the application number, and how much, um, each fee was charged, the type of a permit it was for, the name, and then there was a breakdown of the expense, which, um, is the legal ads, postage, supplies, hours, um, overhead, and then the total. And right now, we have the fee set, I believe it's three hundred dollars for an in-law apartment, and it was a three fifty for, um, a regular special permit, variance, why is it different?
Three fifty and two seventy-five for an appeal, right?
I'm sorry, I know it's, it's two seventy-five for the building inspector's.
Appeal.
Yeah.
But they look, they look like they, uh, you, you had a three fifty fee and a, an outlay of three fifteen, you had a three fifty fee with an outlay of three sixty-five, you had a three fifty fee with an outlay of three thirty-five, and then you had a, uh, oh, we don't know what, we don't know what the next one is yet.
Um, okay, so the reason, um, for the increases is basically because of the legal ads, um, some are more lengthy than the others, and that is, and, of course, the more words you have, the more expensive it's gonna be.
What's the average here, did you do an average?
Uh, I did it on my spreadsheet, but I didn't bring a copy of it, so I'm doing it right now, so.
Cause one of them, I mean, is skewed, one twenty-three oh five.
Well, what I ended up doing, just for my average.
Yeah, but, yeah, Dan, that hasn't, that doesn't have a le- legal ad on there.
What is it?
Right, so.
Yeah, it doesn't come in here.
If you look at it.
Oh, I see.
Look at it so that you basically eliminate the bottom one, and you add up the totals for the other eight and divide by eight, so the average of those.
What do you got?
Is three hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-six cents.
Boy, that's pretty close to that three fifty mark, isn't it?
Ooh.
Yep.
Basically, you know, we, we run a tight ship here, there, you know, other, other boards in town should, you know, pay attention to what we're doing.
Well, that's a, that's a pretty good, uh, that's a pretty good statement, isn't it?
See, I, I see, I told you, you could cut the costs to the taxpayers and.
There you go.
Still get the job done.
Let the record show, that was, uh, Dan McDonald's, uh, proposal, and, uh.
I wanted to cut it in half, but at three twenty-five, we would have been short.
Yeah, we would have shot.
Running a seven-dollar deficit on every permit.
So it's three fifty, we did well.
Can I, what's the explanation for having different fees for different permits? They require, if they require legal ads and notice to a butters, shouldn't they kind of all be the same?
Yeah, I thought it was all three fifty.
Well, the only change, the difference is the appeal, right?
Well, yeah.
Special permits and variances are three fifty.
We did, we did, I think we did it the other way, because.
It's, it's kinda not your fault if you appeal it, so it's kinda like, or.
I think it was because.
If a neighbor appealed it.
We, we didn't have many, prior to the fees going down, on the, uh, appeal of the building inspector, we didn't have any. However, there were people who, who, who wanted to, but at the time, I think it was like six fifty, wasn't it?
That was six fifty?
It was six fifty, so, so we said, geez, that seems like a lot, so.
Just on a transfer of a license.
So we lowered it down to.
It's not fair.
Was it two fifty we lowered it down, or two seventy-five?
Well, a transfer of a license, you don't advertise.
No, no, we didn't do that at all, no, 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 there was an issue with the.
We, we, we still went through the permit, we cha- prior to you coming here, we changed it, so if it was just a transfer.
Oh, yeah, that's nothing.
We had Dr. Put- Putford in here.
Yeah, that's nothing.
She paid six fifty.
Yeah, well, we, 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 we lowered that down to, if it's same, same, it's just a, no fee.
I was in Manhattan, did she go from Groveland Square to the other place?
To another office, where there was a.
It's a transfer of a permit.
Locked her in there before.
Right.
And she had to pay the six fifty, that's what brought up the issue, I didn't think that was.
If you don't, there's no notice to a butters, and there's no legal notice, so that's fine.
So we, we, we changed it, so that if they transferred.
The, the reas- the reason that we did that was because there, there was people who wanted to appeal the building inspector, and it was too expensive, so.
At six fifty?
At six fifty, that's why we lowered it even further down, uh, below the three fifty, because.
But if you're still trying to cover legal ads and notice to a butters.
You're not, you're not gonna do butters.
Yeah, you wouldn't?
If you go.
Appeal of a building permit?
Well, it, it's all, it's not all building permits, some of, some of it, at the time, it was other issues that, that, that they weren't satisfied with the comments that, that were being made.
Wait, what do you mean? Who's, sorry, who isn't satisfied with the comments?
All right, wait, wait a minute, hold on, the, oh.
The person that, 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 that was aggrieved wasn't, wasn't, didn't like the decision of the building, uh.
Right, they're only, right, so, how this, so it's supposed to be all per, you know, all applications are three fifty, the only one was two seventy-five, was if the building inspector rendered a decision to a particular resident or whatever, they had the right to appeal to us, and that was only two seventy-five. Because I don't think, I, I forget why we did that, but.
Well, I think, I think it was, we were trying to encourage people.
But it's only those, it's not for in-laws.
Instead of discouraging by fees, to encourage them to, uh, voice, you know, come, come and talk to us.
That's fine, my question is, is it meeting the cost that it costs us to process those applications at two seventy-five?
Well, no. We haven't had many of.
We haven't had one since.
We'll, we'll find out when we get this.
Not one like that.
But this one was two seventy-five then, because of.
Yeah, but, but we haven't, it, we haven't got the bill yet, we'll know on the next one.
No, 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 this one was three fifty.
This one?
Man was three fifty, that was the one that was a special permit.
No, this one, um.
Yeah, but this isn't listed.
The one that was just turned down on there.
Twenty sixteen dash five, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, it's not on here, yeah, th- these two aren't on here, so we won't know. But that was, that was the reason behind, because people had said it's cost too much money to, to come, come before the board, so we reduce it down to two seventy-five.
And since we did this, we haven't had one who was only just doing that. You know, this one was a little different, because he had plans, he was doing a whole different thing, so he paid the three fifty, I'm assuming.
Okay.
Yes, I'm assuming.
Because, because we did, we did in fact, uh, uh, do a butters on this one, but, but some you wouldn't, because if it's just a, some type of a dispute with the building inspector that, that, uh, say, say he wanted to build a building and, and he wanted it higher than, and, and, and he felt that the building inspector was, was saying that.
Interpreted the bylaw exactly.
Incorrectly, that's right, and so, uh, uh, that's everything, which, which really might not necessitate, uh, notifying a butters, I don't know, but that's, that was the reason, was to try to encourage them to.
Yeah, it's, Tom. I mean, it's good call of policy, that if somebody is aggrieved.
Yeah.
Of what they feel is a, an erroneous decision of the building inspector.
Yeah.
I think the hurt ought to be set pretty low on having them, uh, granting them the ability to appeal that decision, to get some relief from us, I mean, it shouldn't be.
I don't have a problem with that, I just don't think that the town should outlay money for it.
Well, we're breaking even.
We don't know.
We don't know.
We will.
We, well, we do know, because we're averaging three forty-three, so there's.
And we're charging two seventy-five.
Well, we're, oh, we're charging three fifty, so we're, we're, we're making a profit of seven dollars on every permit, and that can defray the cost of the one appeal that we get every two or three years, for the sake of somebody that may have ended up on the wrong end of a decision, the wrong end of the stick, so.
Access to justice, I understand.
But, but we're not losing money here, if we're running a deficit, we're not allowed to, because we're only granted authority, what's our revolving account cap, Mr. Chairman?
I think it was five thousand bucks.
Five thousand, that's right. Yeah, we can't spend five thousand two hundred, we can't spend fifty-five hundred, we, we can't. So, you know, if we run out of money, something's gotta tell us, who's gonna tell us?
Julie? Someone will.
But so far, so good.
What's in the account? Maybe someone on the board of.
We just started a new budget, so.
Yeah, we're right up there.
Well, it was in the account at the end of the year, cause what's left over sweeps into the general fund?
No, it's nothing, it was not, no, we didn't have enough. So what ends up happening is they go into, um, our revolving account.
Yeah.
They're budgeted, I think, um, I think it's like forty-six hundred dollars a year, and forty-six hundred a year, a hundred a year, covers postage, covers, uh, my fee, legal ads, supplies.
Yeah.
And if anything, uh, if we go, um, above that, then we, um, then I can use the revolving account.
Many applicants in any other towns ever have to pay the legal notice themselves? They do.
Yeah, how, uh, uh.
Yeah.
You know, how conservation runs it is, um, what we do, cause I work for them also, is, um, the applicant, they, um, send the legal notice in themselves, they pay for it themselves, um, and they actually, um, have, they do the mailings themselves also, um, and it's all certified mail. But it's more expensive actually for them to do it, and it's, and they need to keep that.
I mean, the, the number of butters on Mr. Wood here is just incredible here, I mean, we lost, we lost money on that one.
Yeah.
I mean, that's just incredible.
When they come to the meeting.
Like a city.
They, they pay twenty-five dollars for that list from these officers' office, that's on top of the fee.
When they come to the meeting, uh, who verifies that they put it there?
You have to bring a tear sheet.
They give us the cards.
What's that?
They, um, the resident comes in and gives us the cards.
Do they bring a tear sheet from the newspaper?
No, no, I'm, no, no, I, I understand that, you're talking about the certified, but, but I'm talking about, yeah.
The newspaper sends you a copy of, like, the tear sheet from the newspaper to bring in for the meeting.
Okay.
It shows it was wrong.
Well, the applicant should cut it out of the paper.
As part of the fee, the, the newspaper actually would send it there.
Have you had a problem with that, have you had a problem with that, with, that, that it didn't, that you didn't advertise it, forgot to advertise it when it came to the meeting?
Well, if, if that happens, then we don't have the meeting.
Yeah, I know, but, but we'd be like all dressed up and no place to go. Has it happened?
I've also had towns where.
Who verifies what they send, is what I wanna know.
No, it has not happened.
Has not happened.
No.
Well, what, what does, what's actually getting sent to via butters at that point?
They, um, there's a form letter.
That you, you provide?
Who does that?
That we provide, that we give to the applicant.
I see. I see.
So, so you would probably give these, these legal descriptions here, and that would be what would be put in the paper?
Yes.
Cause they're not making that up.
No.
There's other towns that make the arrangements for running the notice in the paper, but then have the paper bill you directly, and that may be the specific newspaper that's willing to do that, but, you know. So that means that the town is coordinating, actually placing the notice and controlling that it goes in and when it goes in.
They're not paying for it.
But they don't deal with the money, the, the applicant has to pay directly.
The only, the only, the only issue I can see is that, is that, um, some of these things happen in a, a, y- y- you know, the, the road to hell was paved with good intentions, but some of them happen. You know, we, you know, we rush at the end, I'm not sure that the applicant would have the.
And where we only meet once a month, if you miss.
Yeah, yeah.
The deadline, it might have.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it could be, it could be, it, we may be putting the applicant, uh, in a bad position who, who really might miss it, and, and then you got a problem, so.
Well, it seems like we're on top.
Yeah, we're, we're in pretty good shape, I, I'm surprised, but, well, yeah, I think we're in good shape on that.
Pretty much on target, I, I mean, obviously, we made a little, we lost a little here, there, and everywhere, but the average three forty-three, I think, is pretty spot on.
That's excellent.
And this is all of them since we changed the numbers, is that right?
Except for the last couple, right, that we did today, right.
Except for the last one.
Well, right, there's one that was, they were, because I had this done for last month and then we didn't meet.
Yeah, yeah.
Plus, all the bills haven't come in yet for today, you know.
Right, I was just wondering about our sample size, so we're making sure it's getting bigger, that's all.
With, with regards to the minutes of July sixth, um, I happen to buy that because some people take their dogs to walk in the morning and night, I sort of take the car for a ride, and I go out around that area, well, every day, and, and I'm surprised that, uh, I thought there was quite a, quite a bit of discussion about protecting the area, uh, that was gonna be, uh, commercial versus residential, and as of today, I didn't, I haven't seen any attempt to, to separate that off, so, uh, do you know whether he's picked up the paperwork?
And you were talking about.
I'm sorry, uh, is it Nian here?
What are you talking about?
Uh.
Nian?
Nian, yeah, eight eighty-three, same.
He called me, um, and I did send him a copy of the decision, so I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, you know, remember the discussion we had about the fencing and stuff?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I didn't go to the July sixth meeting.
Oh, you weren't here, okay, you know.
I mean, it's right around a, a federal holiday, it's kind of a bad week for these things.
That's right. Federal holiday, oh, yeah, that's right, we did have a holiday.
Fourth of July, Independence Day, you know, tell the king where to go, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, that's right. Some people are dedicated and others, you know, wanna go up to Maine and, you know, play around.
Some people have their last rodeo.
Yeah, that's right.
Can have a cr- a, a meeting right after Christmas, oh, that's right, we meet the Christmas weekend of the month.
Yeah, so anyways, uh, I, I, I mean, that, that's, you can just, yeah.
Well, I, I have to say, I agree, cause I drive by that property every day.
I know, yeah. And so, I thought it was, I think there was quite a bit of discussion on that, in fact, Bill, uh, uh, Dunn, the chairman of the VOS, had made some comments, which were very good, as far as, you know, and, and not, not expensive to, to do that, so I'm, I was surprised that that hasn't been done yet, cause that would've been, in my mind, probably the first thing I did, you know.
Has the appeal period passed? When did you send the decision?
I don't know, I.
Cause if he's not exercising the use yet, then, then doesn't matter.
Uh, he is.
He is though.
I know, I'm sure he is, but. In fairness.
Is it, is it, has he appealed? No.
I think so.
Yeah, you, you, you can't sign it.
I wasn't here.
Oh, yeah.
I wanted to just see what happened.
No, you can't, you, you know, you, you watch it, what's the, you gotta watch it on TV.
I actually. I didn't watch it on TV.
Watch the video, that's how it works. Right, Charlie? If, if he wasn't here, he wants to, gotta watch it on TV.
Like the five thousand other people that have to do.
You think it's that many? You think it's that many, Charlie? I know a couple people, cause they do talk to me about it, but.
Yeah.
Is it five thousand?
Uh.
Wow.
When I send it over to Fox Network.
Oh, well, there you go. Yeah, right, yeah, what, what, what time would it be advertised, cause I'm, I'm missing some programs right now, I'm gonna run home and watch it on Fox.
They don't put it on NBC.
No.
Compete with the Olympics.
It's not liberal, it's.
Trump says, don't use those.
It's not, it's not liberal enough.
No.
Especially, uh, uh, Clinton News Network.
Who is Chris Wallace's father's name?
CNN. I like that.
Yeah. You know Chris Wallace?
Yeah.
Who's his father's name? Who's his father's, I can't remember his name.
What, his first name?
Yeah.
I know his last name.
I can't remember his first name. He's, he's died, but I can't, I can't, I, I, I moved the other day and I couldn't, couldn't remember it.
Oh, well, while, while we're looking at that, why don't I just read the Eagle Tribune is, we have a bill for two twenty-seven twenty-five. And then we have, uh, Julie House for three nineteen fifty-seven. Boy, it sounded off cool this morning, but, but about noon time, it sounded like someone turned the heat up. Cause you guys are all working side, so.
I was like, I, I was outside for about five minutes then, so.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
I was working up at Phillips Exeter.
Yeah, oh, where, yeah, was, was it like that there?
School up there, yeah, it was warm, it was warm.
Yeah, but not early, it, it was like cool, early, and all of a sudden, it's like, someone turned the heat on.
Yeah. I believe it was forty-eight thousand dollars a.
What?
Forty-eight thousand dollars a year up there for that school, if you wanna.
Really?
Yeah, thirty-seven thousand if you're just attending, forty-eight thousand if you're bored there.
Yeah. Wow, where is it?
Exeter, New Hampshire, one oh eight.
I, I re-tracked there, that's right.
That's what you said?
Yeah, I re-tracked it years ago, you know, they have an indoor track, but, uh, was a, uh, was a dirt track, and it actually had a, had a, uh, had a fifty-yard dash that, that I had, and we used to run forty-yard dashes, but they had a fifty-yard dash there, yeah.
But the school was only built in nineteen forty, you couldn't have been there.
Well, I was young, I was real young. I, 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 I was going through some, I was going through some, uh, uh, scrapbook, and I found some Little League pictures, and I showed it to some people, and they weren't born the year I showed my picture, so it's a little embarrassing when, when, uh.
Yeah, I know.
People be sure to, and if I showed it to you, you probably weren't born then either.
I'm sure I was.
That's my.
It was nineteen fifty-eight.
I don't know, I was just, I'll talk to him.
Were you, were you born?
Nineteen sixty.
Yeah, there you go.
Sorry, thank you.
Okay, you all set, any que- any questions, uh, on, on the, uh, July sixth minutes? Okay, how about a, uh, but we need a, uh, motion to approve the minutes.
Make a motion to approve July sixth.
Mark, uh, is to approve, seconded, Casey's second, all's in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain, Dan wasn't here, he abstained, thank you. Okay, so now we just need the invoices coming back.
There's one.
We have one, we need a motion, Julie House, three nineteen fifty-seven. Need a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve, three nineteen forty-seven.
Mark approved.
Nineteen fifty-seven.
Yep, and seconded by.
Second.
Casey, all's in favor? Five zero, that goes.
Actually, one of these invoices actually fills in the blank that Julie had here for the Nian, yeah, Nian is two twenty-seven twenty-five.
Oh, did, okay. So where does that go to?
Plus.
Goes a little higher.
One twenty-three oh five.
No.
Yeah, three, three fifty thirty, three hundred and fifty dollars and thirty cents.
Hey, hey, listen, the.
That's not the average, that's just the total of Nian, yeah.
Yeah, that lasted, we found, we found the numbers, it was three fifty thirty-seven, you went thirty-seven cents over. You got thirty-seven cents?
That was only one application, though.
That was one, the average is still under the threshold.
I know, but I just wondered if you wanted to cough up the thirty-seven cents.
No, there's a law of averages, yeah.
Okay.
Just thought I'd ask.
You know, we're supposed to serve the public without making a profit off of them, so.
I just thought I'd ask.
I don't wanna make a profit off people.
Well, I've, I've worked in, in towns and municipalities that, that, uh, they subsidized it, they, I mean, the last town I worked in, it was twenty-five dollars. They just, they just, they just subsidized the, the fees.
I've seen application fees ranging from fifty dollars to a thousand dollars.
Thousand dollars?
For variance or special permit.
I got a variance last year up in Maine, and it, uh, and it was, uh, I think it was a hundred and seventy bucks.
Really? What did it pay? Was it?
But I had to do my own cert mail list, I had to get the butters list from the clerk.
Yeah, we did, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
And then send everybody, uh, certified mail, so there's the variable.
Yeah.
A, a thousand and doing certified.
But, you had to do the stuff?
But procedurally, if somebody doesn't do that, it's supposed to bring them all back, then it just takes it off the docket, and you just gotta play kick the can.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's three forty-four forty.
And.
Yeah, that's, that's the revised average.
So, so. The revised a, is, the revised average is three forty-four.
We want it to be three fifty point zero zero.
Well, we have, wait a minute, we need that seven dollars, remember you said, for the building inspector?
No. We need it. For the thirty-five.
Keep the bank some subsidy for the, you know, the aggrieved party that got a bad.
Thirty-five.
Okay, have these both been approved? Cause I just signed.
No, I need, I need this one here.
Yeah, yeah.
So we need a motion to approve the Eagle Tribune for two twenty-seven twenty-five.
You know, it, it, w- w- we also had another avenue that we could've gone with another advertising, uh, venue.
Yeah, we chose not to.
Well, I, I chose too, but I was outvoted by the spendthrifts on the board.
You were, yeah, you were, you were.
Um, you know, people that, you know.
But I give you credit for the, for coming, we're right on the money, so that's good. We need a motion to.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We save people three hundred and twenty-five dollars on every application for the last two years.
Two twenty-seven twenty-five. Seconded by Casey?
Yeah, we have.
And that's money, that's money.
All those in favor?
Mark, Mark made it.
It's groceries for somebody.
Okay.
I seconded and we all voted, apparently.
There we go. Now, anything in open discussion, uh, I, I, I will just say in open discussion that, that we had a meeting, what, it was a, two weeks ago, wasn't it, I think?
July fifteenth, I think it was.
July fifteenth, uh, relative to the, uh, changes in the, uh, the bylaws. And it was decided then, uh, that, uh, Casey and, uh.
Kathy.
Kathy, Kate, Kate.
Whatever her name is, hey you, you know, whatever.
Yeah, whatever her name is. Would, would, uh, sit in with two members of the, uh, of the, uh, uh, planning board and, uh, discuss some of the, uh, some of the issues that, that they, they had, and, and then, uh, it would be brought back to the board and, uh, for review, so, but, but, uh, uh, it was my understanding that, that wasn't gonna take place until sometime in September, so.
Yes, and I've been meaning to get in touch with, um, the chairman of the planning board, and I just haven't yet.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I don't, I, I, so I don't, I don't see that, that, uh, it's not gonna, it, it, there's not.
They don't wanna meet with us till September?
Yeah, I know, and it's not gonna be on the, uh, uh, special town meeting.
More than likely, it won't make it.
No, it's not, it, it was, it was discussed that it wouldn't be, so they're gonna, but they are gonna meet in, in, um, in September and, uh, go through, go through some of the issues.
Yeah, I think there's.
We need more permit, permitted uses.
Well, uh.
And it needs to be dog friendly, cause the, uh, no, uh, you know, dogs and no kennels and no dogs, you know, I mean.
You were there that night.
He's on another.
Yeah, yeah, you were there.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's gotta be pro animals.
So I just wanna tell the board, this is my last rodeo.
So.
Between the reconstruction of the zoning things, I know there's gonna be more meetings, and, um, I'm not really interested in, I shouldn't say it. I don't have the time for the learning of it, and.
This, this, this fascinating stuff, yeah.
Huh, yeah, it's just, you guys are more educated than me, let's put it that way, you got some good people on here, and, uh, the summertime has just been, it's been kinda tough to, you know, come in here and blah, 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 winter time, I wish I could just be on here in the winter, but, um, it was a good run, and I'm doing the, um, up at Hampton, I got a few units up there, and they suck at me in to get on the board up there, and between the two of them and everything, and. And the other thing is I've just been finding out seriously, is having your own business and being on this board, I mean, all my business is in Groveland. And people are just, you know, you shouldn't do this, you shouldn't, and you know who the killer was, was, a few days ago, I'm at the gas station. And, uh, they're really on me about two people, you can't prove this gas station slash, uh, grocery store that's coming in on Salem Street. There's enough gas stations and this and that, and I say, hold on a minute, I says, I don't even know anything about this thing, it hasn't even gone through conservation yet, well, you can't approve this, and I'm like, you know something, that kinda just nailed the thing for me, and I'm just like, I think I had enough. Kinda like Bill Dunn, he's not, I don't think he's coming back in May, and it's just, you know, after a while, you're just, um, but, you know, I, I tried it, I really liked it for the first year, but then once I know the zoning things are gonna be changing, and, um, I went to Pawtucket, you, you, you guys got a lot more than me, all four of yous, so, I'm gonna leave it up to you, I admit it. I shouldn't say I went to Pawtucket, you guys have a lot more education in that stuff.
Is it, is it, I don't, is that a, is that a school run?
Every time you guys talk about something, a little, I'm kinda like the little guy kinda catching up, hold on, and I don't wanna do that to you, you know? But really, I had, I had a great run here, and, um, yeah, you know, I wish I had the more time in the, in the summer, but, you know, when you're, I'm tired right now, being up, up there in full sun, you know? So, I try, I was gonna leave in March, and I tried to get Brian Lynch on, Brian Lynch was a nice guy, he was on here before, and I thought he was gonna come and, uh, take my place, but you just never heard from him, but I didn't wanna leave you a blank, cause I knew we were really down, so, once work started, I just didn't try to find somebody, and all, you know, and all of a sudden, it's just.
There should be a role that you can't leave until you find your replacement, I mean, that, that should be like something that's agreed upon when you, you take the possession.
Yeah.
Yeah, like.
Isn't that the selectman's responsibility?
Yeah, I think it is, yeah.
It's just a point, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I'll be listening, I'll be listening, though.
Thank you, Mark.
We'll miss you.
Yeah, it's, uh.
You know, giving your time.
Yeah, thank.
Serving, yeah.
I did twenty-two years as tree warden, I did two years as cemetery commissioner, and I've been here a year and a half, and I think it just time, like, I'm gonna take a break. You know?
Enjoy the summer.
Well, I, I really enjoy being on the board because, uh.
Well, you're retired.
Well, but also, I I enjoy all the Christmas cards I get from everybody, you know.
I didn't get one, Tom.
Neither did I, but I'm just kidding, it's a joke.
Well, I stay on for the pay.
Yeah, well, that too, the pay is is uh, with the number of meetings we've done in the last couple months, the pay is uh minus zero zero zero.
It's like the old saying, when you used to collect unemployment, what are you doing in the winter, I'm collecting unemployment, the pay is the greatest, but the hours ain't bad.
And I, I mean, this, this, this.
Hours are not great.
Being a Little League coach.
There's no hours.
This this reminds me of being a Little League coach, you know, you couldn't please everybody.
Um, what boards are getting stipends, besides the Board of Selectmen? Do you know?
I used to get a stipend for a tree warden, I never took it. I used to get a stipend for cemetery, I never took it.
Planning board.
The planning board does?
Yeah.
Conservation could, but they waive. Board of Health, I think it's um two fifty. Conservation might be three hundred, but they waive it.
Well, what I was gonna say is, I mean, it'd be nice, and maybe that would down, more people want to.
I think if there's a stipend, then you're eligible for the, you know, buying into the 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 health insurance.
Yes, yes.
You can pay for it, it won't be subsidized, but you can, I mean, you get a group plan.
Cause it used to be, they would give you a stipend without any taxes taken out and everything, now they.
Or take, what what is it, what, there was a, when I first got on the board, there was a, they talked about a stipend for the zoning board, but but I don't, we didn't do it, and I didn't, is there one? Was there one, was there ever one?
Ever since I've been on, um they've always waived it.
Okay.
But what I'm thinking is maybe that would entice people to wanna be on this board.
How how much was it?
Two fifty?
Is that what it was?
I don't recall.
Was there a stipend for a, I thought it was just elected, no?
Well, if it was two hundred and fifty dollars, that would entice me to come on. For for.
It might exclude other people, I mean, there's, if if that was a stipend, I'd have to file all kinds of state ethics disclosures. You know, which I could do, I wouldn't take it, you can't get, you can't be on the Board of Selectmen and approve a budgetary item for a stipend that you benefit in, that gives you a financial interest in it.
You need to write a letter probably to the selectman, or would 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 Dan?
I actually wrote one in March.
It's the appoint, it's the, you you resign to the appointing authority.
Yeah.
So the Board of Selectmen appointed you, so you submit it through the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah.
And then I think you file with town clerk too.
Find somebody to.
You file with the town to clerk too.
Take my place.
Well, good luck to you.
Yeah, good luck, and yeah, if you find someone.
Maybe Mike Wood, Mike Wood will come back.
Yeah. Maybe Bill Dunn will come back. If you get a job.
Bill Dunn isn't one, he said that was the, this was the board that he was glad he left.
Listen, uh.
Cause, was it something I said?
Why are we, are we there to fence?
Mark, uh, right when you get work.
Huh?
Right when you get work.
Yeah.
More than a selectman.